All of my, um, all my Google accounts, because everything is through Google.
Hmm.
Okay, so it's, uh, it's getting ready, setting up your meeting now for YouTube Live. Awesome. Okay, I think, I think we're good. I can't hear myself talking on YouTube, but I could see it playing. And I hate how I look on camera. I'm just gonna say that. Okay. All right, um, uh, Darnell O'Hare, uh, President calling this meeting to order at 5:35 PM. Um, let's go ahead and take roll call.
Director Maruko here.
Director Stickel here.
Director Saldivar here.
Director Thon here.
Director Pinzak here.
Awesome. We have a quorum. So we will go ahead and get this meeting started. Do I have a, um, person who wants to read our mission and vision statement?
I'll volunteer. Do you want me to start with the commitment to governing style?
Let's do it.
Or do we need to do pledge allegiance first?
Oh, I went way ahead tonight. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Perfect.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, Mark. So moving on to our, um, commitment to governing style. Mark, do you want to read that for me?
Yes. As a reminder to the public and directors, the board will govern lawfully, observing policy governance principles with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal procedure, encouragement of diversity in viewpoints, strategic leadership, more than administrative detail, clear distinction of board and chief executive roles, collective rather than individual decisions, future rather than past or present, and governing proactively rather than reactively.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have, um, somebody that wants to read the reading of the mission and vision? Or Mark, do you want to do that too?
Sure. Uh, mission statement. Bromley Charter School empowers students to achieve academic excellence and leadership through critical thinking, reasoning, problem solving, and character development in a safe environment. Vision from the East Charter School strives to become a preeminent charter school in the state of Colorado where all students realize their maximum intellectual character and leadership potential in a, in a diverse and well-defined ethical environment.
Um, thank you. Um, so for the stake, uh, the stakeholder comments, I didn't receive any emails, um, or any comments to be made. Is there anybody here that wants to make any public comments? Okay. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the table?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One thing really quick, I just noticed it that under action items, there isn't anything listed yet. And I know we need to vote to approve the calendar. So the calendar is under the governance process, but not under action items. And so I don't know if we can make that amendment now, but I just realized that.
Um, okay, we can make a motion to amend the agenda to add the, the um, the school calendar, right, Jenna? Is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second?
Well, second.
Okay, um, I don't know how to open up voting, so I guess we could just take a verbal record and then I'll take the notes here and then, um, Cece can fix my notes later.
I can add them in after.
Okay, um, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Any nays? Okay. Um, so that motion will pass, so we will add, um, an action item to approve the school calendar. Okay, and Cece, I don't know how to do that on, on this side. You're gonna have to give me a
You won't be able to update the agenda right now, and then when we get down to action items, we can add a motion in the MCP when I get in there.
Okay. I'll remind you to do that if we forget.
Okay.
Cool. Um, so the first, um, oh, okay, so now we've got to go back. So now do I have a motion on the table to approve the agenda? With the additional action item added.
Director Maruko will motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendments, um, as, uh, discussed.
Director Saldivar will second.
Perfect. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, no nays?
I can't get the button. Aye.
All right. Moving on, now that we've approved the consent agenda, um, five are governance processes supporting global objectives. So we'll have Jen start with the, uh, school calendar discussion, so we know, um, moving forward with the action items.
Sure. So, um, just wanted to preface one on the, you know, we mentioned last board meeting that the calendar was coming up and we were working to engage our stakeholders in, um, providing feedback and just kind of putting ideas on the table, what this could look like. And as we know, this came about because 27J has changed their calendar to start later. And so we normally put forward the school calendar every year at this time, but we had to go through and make some changes um, for next school year to kind of be in line with 27J. And so we worked to address our priority areas as well as utilize feedback from our stakeholders to come up with the best, um, possible product while also meeting the requirements from the state in terms of the number of contact days and hours for our students. So what you can see attached is the calendar that we are putting forward, um, for approval. And, um, so, I don't know, would you like me to walk through a couple of the key changes or, um, what would be helpful for you guys?
Please, Jen, if you could talk about some of those key changes. And then I know we talked about, um, what testing that schedule might look like with this change, and if there's going to be enough time, um, within the schedule for students to be back in school and perform their best.
Yep. Um, and I'm just gonna send a request real quick to share my screen if that's helpful to display the calendars we talk through it.
Okay. All right, um.
Pop up.
Allowing presenter.
All right, cool. All right, here you all are. Oh, maybe do this one. Okay. Can you all see that? Okay? All right. All right, so, um, we know that 27J is going to be starting school August 21st for kids, and one of our priorities was to maintain a similar flow to 27J um, for start and end times of the school year as well as major breaks. And so, um, our kids are coming back for their first days, which we do a lot of on, like, onboarding for students, so getting them oriented, pictures, things like that. Half of the kiddos will come on the 19th, half will come on the 20th, and the first full day with all kids will be the 21st. Following a similar cadence to what we've done before. We have a lot, um, about six professional development days leading into that time. Um, and we use that time to make sure staff are trained, have the necessary trainings, they have time in their classrooms. We start getting people, um, focused on our goals for the year. We're looking at data, um, we're doing things like that to get ready for the school year. And then you can see September, um, what we've done is, is we've heard that, um, one, one of our priorities was maintaining consistent instructional days for kiddos on a five-day week. And as we think about state testing, we wanted to make sure that we had enough, enough days of instruction prior to state testing starting to make sure that we're not out of, out of sync and that we're giving, you know, we're giving our kids enough instruction prior to that. So you'll notice that there will be fewer professional development days for staff throughout the school year, and we'll be working to make sure that our staff's needs are met in other ways, um, with that reduction. But that was in exchange for prioritizing, making sure we had enough instructional days with kids consistently. Um, so you'll see that we have one PD day in September. We did maintain the October learning cycle break as we, um, had a lot of positive feedback from both staff, and we continue to have um, positive feedback from our community about that. Um, so we have our conferences, which will be the 15th and 16th, as they have been with a half, half day on the 17th. This will be our only half day for next year. Um, we also, in an effort to have good quality instructional days for kiddos, we did eliminate the two other half days throughout the year. So we now only have one. Um, and then you're gonna see that everything in November and December remains as it typically is. Um, then when we pop over to second semester, this springtime is the, always the time of the year that gets a little bit hairy, trying to figure out how to best, um, maneuver that. So as we normally do, we have one professional development day as we return from winter break. We have Martin Luther King Day. We have President's Day as normal. We changed February around a bit. And we have, we're gonna do conferences the 11th and the 12th and do two late nights of conferences. And then we'll do a comp day for our staff as we do compensate them for the additional time beyond the workday for those conferences. We'll do that February 13th, creating a long weekend. It's not the break that people have had in the past, but it's kind of in the middle ground because we're still giving people a little bit of time away, but not so much time away that our kids kind of fall out of, out of step and routine. Then we've got President's Day and, um, and then we'll have one professional development day following that, um, to form kind of a mini-break. But also, um, supporting that, that other goal of making sure that we're, um, giving staff enough time to prepare, but also allowing for that rejuvenation piece. So then we'll move into March, which you can see, um, it's pretty consistent here. I mean, we're getting five days of instruction every week. We have spring break. We come back, we're gonna do one professional development day. This, this school year, we have two, so we've reduced that. We also heard from our school accountability committee that, you know, parents, while it didn't happen everywhere in this schedule, generally speaking, Mondays and Fridays are easier on parents if kids don't have school. And so, um, you'll notice we didn't do the, the second day there. We also heard that it was a bit of a long stretch in April. And so, um, we've added, instead of having our professional development day in May, we moved it to April 27. Um, this should still work fine for testing because typically, historically, um, CMAS testing concludes that last full Friday of April and it begins, we usually start testing the Tuesday of that second, that first full week of April. So the testing window usually is right in here. And so you can see we've got consistent days of instruction there. We also heard from our community that it is important, that they would prefer that we end the school year in May. And so we, by eliminating some of the professional development days within the school year, um, and shortening that February break, we're able to achieve that goal. And so what we have is students will actually end May 28th. These will be three full days of instruction, and instead of what we've done in the past where we have, um, three days and then a half day, it's just gonna be three full days. And we're gonna have our staff have two days at the end of the school year to wrap up. Um, kind of get, you know, celebrate the year and then, um, get things closed out and ready to start again next year. So that's kind of our, our flow of the changes that you'll see. Um, you also can note here, then the 24, 25 school year, and I apologize, it's really small, but now it's bigger. We had 133 school days before CMAS. This next year we'll have 130.5. So even with the later start, we were still able to stay within two and a half days of what we had done in the past. You'll also notice that the days, um, I included in the admin section for you all where you can see the school year's calendar with all of these teacher-student days on the sides. So you can see kind of the shift this school year. You'll notice when you look at that calendar that semester one is longer. And that there are fewer instructional days in February, um, in March than there are in this school calendar. So you'll see semester one in 25, 26 is shorter. But we have more contact days in February and March than we do this year. So it's a little more even, I guess you could say.
Um, and then as you
Sorry, can I ask a quick question about February? Um, just to clarify, so those days that you said that, um, were gonna be conferences, they're full actual school days, right? There, those two are full days, and then it's the comp day on that Friday, right?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, thanks.
Yeah, you bet. Well, and as always, you'll look at, I'll look at this like 800 times. It's been by a bunch of different people. They've looked at it, and inevitably after it's approved, it'll, somebody will find an error in one of the sections somewhere, and then, oh, yeah, I gotta go back and fix that. So, um, please, please look closely, because there might be something that's a little off. Um.
Hey Jen, I was just curious, what was some of the feedback, um, that, or did you receive feedback?
Yeah, we received a lot of feedback, um, actually. Um, I was working on, I think this is now shifted to a different tab, right? You can see what I'm looking at here. Okay. So we, um, I'm working, this is in progress, on a communication to both staff and families to kind of say, you know, hey, here's, here were the priorities that we had, and here's what we did. And, um, so you can see that one of our priorities was to keep a five-day week, and so we just continued as planned, as we have always done, prioritizing that. We aligned to the start of the school year, so now, you know, Bex's first day is the 19th. 27J's first full day is the 21st, but there, they start orientation on the 20th. We're working on stacking good days of instruction for kids with a solid five-day school week, so I suppose I can eliminate that first one. This is a better, better row. Um, but you can see that we maintained numbers of days, eliminated half-days. Um, we added a PD day at the start of the school year and two at the end of the year, maintained the October break, and added a long weekend in February to kind of address this priority. Um, and then we wanted to consider the parent perspective in childcare, so we did maintain the, that alignment for 27J's major breaks. And we also eliminated those couple of half-days that kind of can get sticky too. But in terms of feedback, um, you'll see some overlap here. Um, we kept the five days a week, um, as we heard from parents. Starting and ending with the district was a theme that came up, so we did send that survey to parents. Um, we had 249 responses. Uh, we also ran the count, a draft calendar by our school accountability committee. We ran it by RISE team, which is our shared leadership team within the school, who took it to their prospective grade level teams. Um, we ran it by the board, uh, briefly as well. Um, and then our administrative, um, kind of executive administrative team worked on finalizing the calendar with, also with additional input on that. Um, and then we also heard from that parent survey that keeping the learning cycle breaks came up a lot. Um, liking the placement of the October break and some people said to reduce long breaks. So in response to that feedback, we kept the October break on the same week. In February, we established a long weekend rather than a long break, um, as kind of a compromise. People also indicated the number one value that people had was family time together. And so we responded to that by, um, basically kind of condensing the school year. There's more time together in the summer. Um, we maintained the October break and holiday breaks in alignment with 27J. We also heard that people preferred that we ended in May. Some said, we would love it before more of the, well, we couldn't quite get there, but we got May. So, um, we did that through reducing the number of staff professional development days and, um, the February break. And then we heard that April was a long stretch, so we moved the May 4th PD day to April 27th. Um, we also heard from our middle school staff, um, John did a survey with them, and um, it was, it was overwhelmingly in favor of moving to what we call all white days, where we have that consistent 50-ish, 55-ish minute period each day. And so we're working to align, kind of work on our master schedule presently. So you'll notice on this calendar that the start and end times of the school day are not listed, because we're just working on that particular detail. Um, and then we also heard that people would like to have elementary and middle school have the same start and end times. So we're working on tweaking that right now. So, yeah.
Jen, I just have a quick question.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, Mark. Finish up yours.
No, I was just gonna say, for what it's worth, uh, the white days for middle school would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Classes on the block schedule and
Agreed. I'm glad you, I'm glad you actually went, you did go in and kind of look at that, just to kind of see what the feedback was from those people. So I'm glad you did that. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Jen, I was just gonna ask, because one other question, and Maris, you might have to help me on this, because I think this was your question when we first started talking about the calendar, but um, do we know how many days we are in compared to the district leading into CMAS? Because I believe our calendar from last year, we were like a week less or a few days less leading into CMAS. So I know we're the same as we were, but do we know how we compare to the district?
I did not analyze how many days we have compared to the district. I focused on trying to make sure we retained the same number, like, as close to the number of days that we have had in the past. Um, and so I can tell you that, I mean, I'm looking at it, and they're consistently a four-day week, so.
I'm guessing by eliminating that February break, and again, Maris, correct me if I'm saying it wrong, but I'm guessing by eliminating that break, we're eliminating the days that we were short versus the district.
I don't know their new calendar at all, so I don't know what those numbers are. I mean, obviously in Jen, it, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but we are, what? Three days shorter than last year before testing? Is that correct?
Uh, two and a half.
Two and a half. So basically three, because half-days can get, you know, goofy. Um, but I think definitely eliminating that February helps a lot, because that's a, that was a big chunk of time that was taken off between when you come back from break and then go into testing. I mean, that was a significant amount of time. And we also had like one other weird day that day, if I remember right, last year. Um, during that time, but I, you know, I can't say either for that, for the district, just because I have not looked at their calendar. But I'm guessing that helps that February break not being the whole week.
It does, and lasts, the, the, I mean, and it's about getting back in and having some consistency like, in the, in the schedule, and I think this does help. Um, the other part is, is that, you know, if you just look visually on it with the district being on a four-day week, and you take and make all of the Mondays red, because their kids aren't going to school, and you look at the number of red, red or purple days that, or blue days that we have that aren't a Monday, you can see that we have more, you can visually see that we have more instructional days.
Well, and I'm looking at the, this year's calendar, in February for this year, we have six days off, and then March, seven. So I mean, that, that significantly reduced that by changing that, so.
Yeah, and our first semester in this school year's calendar was like 82 and a half days in semester one, but semester two was shorter. And so like last year, we had, or this current school year, we have like 13 school days in February. Next school year, we'll have 17. But this school year, we have like 82 and a half days in semester one, and next school year, we'll have 75 and a half. So we're shortened semester one quite a bit, added those days to semester two, reduce the professional development day so that we could continue in the break time, so we could continue to end in May. That's how we were able to do it.
Yeah, and just to throw it out there too, I mean, I, again, I would have to count the days, but even though they, they would be red on Monday, but you have to keep in mind that they go longer. So they do have more time during that week. And, and, you know, like I said, I, I'm much more happy with the not February, because that's where I really felt there was a kind of a struggle, is having that week off when you've got testing just around the corner. And, you know, that was definitely a concern of mine. So I, I feel like it's a better solution not having that.
Yeah, I agree.
Hey Jen, from a, um, just an instructional count hours, days, um, you know, and I know you always take this into account, but, um, how much, uh, I don't know, I'm, I'm gonna use the wrong terminology here, but how much extra do we have for snow days and those sorts of things? So that we, and I know that you always plan so that we were, were well over what we need, but I'm just curious, like, how that panned out with all the changes as well?
Yep. So we actually added one school day to this school year, so we have 166 and a half days um, this year, and our next school year coming up versus 165 and a half, which is what we had this school year. Um, and so we have the minimum requirement of date number of contact days is 160, so we really have quite a lot. But then in the same breath, you also have to balance your student contact hours. And so for middle school, we are required to have 1,080 hours, which can be reduced for qualifying reasons such as parent-teacher conferences and professional learning down to 1,056 hours, I believe. So our student contact hours right now without keep, with keeping a similar belt, like, keeping a similar school day without having that totally finalized, it's 1,112.77. So we're, we're far in a, you know, we're well above what, um, the minimum requirement is. What other questions are out there?
I'm good.
Cool. Well, if there's no other questions, we can, um, move on to the next agenda item under governance, um, processes supporting our global objectives, which is our board calendar. Um, I wanted to just open up the floor for the board members to talk about our calendar. We'll finalize it when we do our board re, board retreat on the 24th. So I didn't do any attachments here. Um, as we discussed last month, we talked about, um, kind of the energy and time that it's gonna take to make sure that the board is, um, ready to go every year. And I think over the last couple of years, we've realized that we're still missing some real strong key components. In order to make time to do that, we decided, um, as a board, um, during our last board session, that we would separate our board meetings from our board meeting sessions or our planning sessions, if you will. So, um, and it also prevents super late nights. I think we try to throw so much into just a very short period of time, which really from 5:15 to 6:30, we'd get together, um, we hadn't seen each other for a month, so we'd have a lot of small talk and really only had 30 minutes maybe to make some, um, real good groundwork into planning and making, um, some movements and some decisions that we had during our summer board retreat. So I recognize adding an additional day to our calendar might be a little tough, and I want to recognize that. But I do think that it's needed in going forward with some of our plannings. Um, so with that being said, um, a quorum won't be needed on those Thursdays that we're doing our work session because we're not voting on anything. It's really gonna be strictly planning. It's gonna be all those things that we've feel like we're mov, making momentum that we Feel like we're move, making momentum that we set aside. So some of those things would be like maybe um. A board handbook that we can pass off that really, when people start on the board, there's a. A great introduction to what the board does, why it does what it does, um, maybe has, um. You know, why we're a policy governance board, why that's important. And then, of course, any other things that we've talked about, like Mark and I, we started working on like what a grievance policy really looks like. And the steps that people should be required to take before they come to the board and. You know, we've kind of put that aside because there's so much other work to be done. So I think adding this extra day a month is gonna be helpful. Um, the retreat. Jen and I had an opportunity to meet with um, Dan from the CDE board to really talk about. Um, what our goals will be um, moving forward. And what I ask is that when we all attend that board retreat, that we really put in our full uh, effort. Um. The board's not gonna be successful with only one or two people really being invested. So I ask that we all. Come in really invested um, in learning from Dan and. Well, some of the things he's gonna bring to the table is he's gonna talk to us about like academic outcomes, how we can tailor. Our board policies to match that and then also make sure that we understand how to follow up on that information. With reports. And so, um. Jen and I, like I said, had a really great conversation with him. Um. I will get out a, an agenda that kind of shows what time he's gonna be speaking. And then we'll have to invite him back because really what he has to offer us, um, will take probably two or three sessions. Um. In order for us to get, to gauge everything that he wants to teach the board on. Cause I, I believe what I hear from the board is we really want an academically successful school. And in order to do that, CDE can bring us a lot of that information to show us what academic success looks like. Um, but this is an opportunity for any feedback that you guys want to give me now, so that as I'm building that agenda for you to review for the retreat. I don't miss anything. Um, I also want to give people the opportunity, like if you can't be there at the work sessions, I'm gonna open up the floor for. Emails, phone calls, one-on-ones to say, hey, I can't be at this meeting, but I know what's on the agenda. Um, I'd like to have a say. And so we can meet one-on-one, we could do phone calls, whatever works for you if that Thursday um, is not good, so. Um, and then I'm, I'm gonna bring Mark in since he's my vice president and helping move through all that.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna add, and I apologize for the background noise if you guys can hear it. I've got some cheer performances happening in my living room, but um.
I love that.
This may fall into that next category of the Casby debrief, but what I think I realized at the Casby conference was. Uh, a lot of boards have a really good strategic plan. And kind of setting that up first and then trying to work backwards from that um, was really important and I, I. Don't feel like we really, you know, have that in place. And so I think that's a lot of the work that I think Darnell and I are kind of thinking of. You know, putting in with these extra work sessions is really establishing that and then putting together the pieces. And the process that will get us there and then actually making it happen. And in thirty minutes, you know, once a month, just wasn't really doing it, I don't think. And then the, you know, retreats um, twice, twice a year, those are great. And we, we get a lot of momentum and then I feel like we just kind of lose it after that. And so to be able to just keep that going, I think would be really, really helpful, but uh. Yeah, that's just my two cents.
Yeah, so I'm really looking forward to Dan coming to that, um, that board retreat, just to give us some really good insight. And really start us on that trajectory of that, um, that strategic plan. My hope is also to reduce um, the hours that we spend during our um, both the work session and our board meetings. I think the board meetings is a great opportunity for, to hear from our stakeholders with whatever's on the agenda item. Um, and then we can spend a little bit less time on those, um, those. You know, the, the, the piece that makes us a board to be transparent in what we're doing. Is is gonna happen, you know, one hour instead of two and a half, three hours every night. So I think we could. We'll be glad that we'll be getting out earlier. My hope is that we'll be getting out earlier. Um, but we'll build the school or that we'll build the board calendar. Um. During that timeframe, so that we kind of know what the next year is going to entail. We kind of know if we're gonna miss something, what does that miss look like? And plan a little bit better around that, um. That board calendar as opposed to like, hey, next week, we're gonna talk about all these things and. You're bummed that you have to miss it, or it's a, a topic that's really important to you and now you have to miss it. And so you can um, find other ways to communicate with either myself or Mark and what that looks like, so. Cool, sound good.
And as far as the board calendar, do you want to talk about Casby at all? I don't, I mean. I've went a couple of years in a row now, um, and I think Darnell and I both kind of talked how we, we maybe felt guilty um, for, for going, but. I, I would highly encourage everybody to, to go because you learn so much and you see what's happening at other schools and progress being made. Uh, one of the, the classes we sat in was District Six up in Greeley. And the turnaround that they have done and just some of the things that they've implemented. Was really inspiring and really just gets your brain going and, and thinking like, all right, well, what can we do, you know, to kind of piggyback off of that and. Um, and supporting Jen with some of her initiatives, like the Smart Lab, you know, that kind of, they went into her schools up there. And so, um. I don't know if everybody wants to mark their calendar now and, you know, hope you can make it, but uh, uh, I think we've talked about, you know, financially. Making it something, you know, a priority as far as our board budget goes, um, and ensuring that. We have the funds to kind of take everybody up there to, to really further our knowledge and then maybe even having a work session there. You know, as on the tail end of that, um, to really, you know, just keep the momentum going.
It's always that same first few days in December, right?
Yeah.
I can just say it's never gonna be anything. I, I always have a trade show that same time, so unless they move it to New Orleans. I probably can't do it.
That's fair. I get it.
They did, they are moving it next year to the next weekend, so it's going to be the second week of December.
Oh, see, that freeze, that would then free me up. I am always gone that first one.
We had a conversation with them when we were there. We said Jen can't make it first.
Jen can't make it. So we either move the whole thing to New Orleans or switch the weekend.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, and one thing um, with Mark, myself and Jen being there, it was just a really great opportunity. One, you, you get to meet other board members too and. Experience some of their struggles and then what they've done to move through some of those struggles and. I think it's a great opportunity. We have all these great ideas and. I don't know if uh, Mark and Jen are a lot like me, but my brain is going and then I come back. And then I go back into work mode and then all those great ideas just kind of get tabled. Um, and it's a, it would be a great chance for us to all come together with all those great ideas, get it in writing, kind of solidify our plans and. It's kind of a good way to end and be like, you know, end of the year, but the middle of the school year and just kind of evaluate our. Um, how it's going and what we want to do. And I think a good preparation for our January retreat. Um. So those are awesome. Um, we kind of like moved into the Casby debrief with, um, without officially going into it, but, um, but yeah, I. I've gone now for three years and I, I do feel guilty, but it is a really great opportunity for all of us to. Um, learn about what's happening and in the public school system and. It, I, it could feel like it's tailored towards those that are elected, but it, there's a lot of really helpful information for those of us that are volunteers on. Um, charter school boards too. And there's other charter school board members that attend from other schools, so. Also a great opportunity to probably network with those charter schools, so.
And a lot of the smaller districts, um, a lot of their schools are K through eight or even K through twelve. You know, so, and they may only have one school as a board, so essentially they're, they're kind of the same as us, so uh, those are good opportunities too.
Um, anything else you want to say about the um, board calendar and Casby debrief? Awesome. Well, then will we, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the finance committee, so. Um, we went ahead and just posted the summary that we had on Monday. Um, Jen, I don't know if you want to speak the, anything specific on this. Um, item that specifically about these items on the agenda, but. I just want to continue to put this in front of everybody is, um, we'll be coming up to a timeframe where we have to. Officially determine, um, refinancing our, our current debt and what that looks like, so. Um, I believe the timeline that we're looking at is probably April. Um, that will be forced a little bit more to look into that and, and talk to Bart, our CFO about what that looks like for the school and. Just be prepared for that. So it sounds like April will be a real strong month for us to get some information and insight and go from there. Um, let's see. It's kind of what I wanted to pull out of there. Jen, was there anything else you wanted to pull out of there?
Um, I think the biggest, the big item is really the refinance that we continue to talk about and then we continue to refine our. Um, finance policies and procedures. Um, you'll find notes in there about maintaining, maintaining the budget. Um, just note that we, you know, in case anyone's wondering, we are aware that we are, we do have some lights out in the parking lot and we are actively working to get those fixed. Um, so.
That cold weather just knocked them all out, right?
Well, it was kind of over Thanksgiving break where we had kind of, the lights kind of had a mass exodus, so, um. We're working on getting the fixtures replaced on the top of all those light poles, um, so then they're refreshed and so. Um, because the cost of that does exceed um, ten thousand dollars, we do have to get three bids and follow up a process and so. While we would love to have those fixed, um, yesterday, um, we do need to make sure we kind of go through our same protocol that we would. Um, for any other large project. And so he's actively working on that and, um, we'll continue to get an update and how he's doing.
Hey, I don't need to interrupt, but um, according to my computer, my system, my system manager is about to shut down my computer. So, which would be, I don't know why, but it's going to. I'm gonna try to get in on the phone, but if I disappear, that's why. It's gonna shut me down. It didn't give me an option to pause, so.
All right, we'll be like, where did Maris go?
Yeah, I know. It's, I don't know.
Um, we'll fix the lights.
That's right. Um, thanks Jen for um, that. And then with other items that I just want to pull out here is just. Uh, board agenda items that will be coming up, which will be the asset protection, January thirtieth, which is monitor and report three E. And then in March, we'll go over financial conditions and activities and then compensation and benefits, um, which is three D and three G. Um, normally around this timeframe, we talk about, um, any updates that Bart has to do, um. But he didn't have any uh, updates. Um, the budget was exactly. Probably just a few dollars off what he predicted, so there wasn't an amendment that was needed, so. I wanted to make sure that I share that with you guys too, in case you were like, normally around this timeframe, we're looking at amendments. We don't have any. So, probably great news. All right, um.
Question on the finance, I was looking at the notes, the SRO update. So that is, we're trying to move to a full-time SRO, is that right?
Yeah, we're in negotiations with that, um, with um, Commander Domenigini with the Brighton Police Department and then. He's working also to, you know, as, as school resource officers are also a community resource. Um, and they work with twenty-seven J as well as E-Orch Academy. We're kind of working to restructure our MOUs to kind of have some similar language and so. Um, the commanders asked that the three of us, the three parties get together. So we can have some conversations around what that looks like and we're working to set a date for that.
Awesome, thanks.
So everything, who's, who's, who's in control of this? It's, I'm trying to get on on my phone. Is that you, Darnell?
Um, yes. Oh, yeah, let me admit you.
Yeah, let me end in that way. If I get kicked out, I'll be on my phone.
Awesome. Um, also for the finance committee. Normally it's myself and um, Jen as the treasurer that sits on these meetings, but. You guys are welcome to attend. If you want to let me know that you want to attend a finance committee meeting, um, either I can excuse myself, um. So that you can attend and we don't have to uh, make it an informal board session since three or more of us will attend, but. Let me know. Happy to let you guys um, see what's happening in the, in the world of finance. Just let me know. I know Mark is very familiar. I'm probably Therese too.
It's exciting stuff.
Great. If there's nothing else that we want to talk about with the finance committee notes there. We can move on to the CEC committee, so. Um, Mark currently sits on the CEC committee. I don't know, uh, Mark, if you want to talk a little bit about CEC, but. Um. There's also a spot for another board member, so I don't attend the CEC. But, uh, Mark, if you want to talk about the CEC committee, what they do and then, um, if you want to. Stay on, make somebody else.
You're right. So I, I was uh, voluntold uh, to join the CEC committee uh, as the treasurer. Because it is really tied to finance. Um, I mean, it's essentially kind of our. I don't know what the right terminology would be, but I, I would say savings or overflow accounts, um, as far as monies go. And uh, it needs to be overseen by a, a board from my understanding. Um, so yeah. I know, I think the past, there's only what, two, one or two meetings a year? And that's just to kind of get updates and make sure everything's uh, where it needs to be. And I believe the last one I was unable to make, this one that's coming up, I am going to be traveling and unable to make, so, um. And I think, Jen, can you remind me, what is, am I the? Treasurer? Secretary? Something like that. There's, there's an office in the position.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't remember entirely.
But there's, you know, the board is come, uh, has myself, the executive director. And the Director of Operations, a community member, and one board member is appointed. Um, if there's three people on the committee, the board can appoint one person. If there's a total of five people on the committee, the board can appoint two. We're currently looking, we're currently at three people in total. We're looking to add the community member. Um, Peter Padi has served in that role for many years. Um, and um. We now have a new member to our finance committee, Shannon, who, or we're, we're gonna be voting to have her join, oh, that, that's fine. Um, have her join, um, the CEC committee. And then if, you know, would, if Mark would like to stay, awesome. If somebody else would like to roll into that. Um, position that uh, is available if he chooses to step away. There we go.
Any volunteers?
Um, do you know what day um, that those meetings are? Do they fall like the first of the year, end of the year?
Yeah, so um, usually we try to schedule them before the finance committee meeting, so they would. And it does usually happen, there's usually a, an end of the year meeting somewhere around May. And then there might be another meeting again, um, sometime in the fall. Um, this year, we've, we're just kind of, uh, had a little bit of turnover and so we're just having to meet a little bit more to. Reestablish who's on the committee, um, but that's typically how we, how it rolls. And they're pretty brief meetings, like thirty minutes before the finance committee each time, pretty short.
I was gonna say, I mean, I have no problem staying on. I just, Mondays have become challenging for me, um, because I'm usually. On a plane somewhere or in another state, so, um, and time changes become a challenge, so, yeah. I just don't want to make it difficult for you guys.
They're on the same day, but before the finance committee meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, um. I don't want to like tell myself to do it because um, sometimes I get really busy up to four, but, um. I can try to be there at three thirty if that's the time that it's. Scheduled. Is that what time is scheduled, Jen, is three thirty, three thirty to four? Okay, so I'll put it in my agenda for like the next um, few months and then if it becomes too difficult, I might pass it on to somebody else.
I mean, I can, I can certainly do it too. Is it every month or Mark, you said it's only a couple of times?
Yeah, it's like one, usually once, maybe twice a year. So it's not a huge commitment. It's just for me, the day of the week is the challenge.
Okay.
I think Darnell, you. I think Darnell, you and I could probably talk offline unless somebody else wants to do it and just, one of us will, will do it unless Maris or CC or Therese.
Okay. Jen, we can tag team it if you want.
Yeah.
So on the days that I have the finance committee, I'll just mark off my 3:30 to four and try not to set meetings and that'll just be emergency things that get set and I wouldn't be able to attend. But. Cool. All right. Anything else we want to talk about with CEC?
Jen, do you know, because I'm a current officer, I guess, do I need to be in attendance in order to remove myself?
Oh, yeah. That's, I wasn't entire, I was thinking about that too. And I wasn't entirely sure because it says the board can appoint people, but I'm like, but then we also have to have a forum to change officer roles and stuff like that. So I still think we probably need to coordinate a time that does work well for everyone, which won't be a Monday at 3:30. We'll have to get everybody who's going to be a part of the conversation on an email chain and figure out a time that works for everyone.
I apologize. The next two Mondays are, are the ones I'm kind of crazy. But the first week of February, I am home and I can make that work. I think it's.
February 3rd. Okay.
I think that's, yeah, whatever that first Monday is.
Yeah. And it's totally okay. We, we all are, all of our calendars get crazy. So I figured it'd be easier to just talk about it together than to try. But yeah, February 3rd, I'll put that out to the group. That might work well for people.
Yeah, that'll be a list. All right. And then do I need to be there to be appointed or how do we want to do that?
I think so.
Okay.
I think that, that will have to work, you know, we'll, we'll need you there for, for the appointment.
You would think that we would be well-versed in how to run boards by now, but it's still very, very new sometimes. Okay. So that would be.
If it would be more convenient, could we tie it into the retreat at some point in the beginning or end? Since we'll all be together anyways and it's already announced.
I mean, that's, let me look and see if that would work.
Cause I mean, it should only take 30 minutes max.
I can see if Hughes is available. Hughes typically off on Fridays. So that may not work in his schedule, but I can ask.
Just throwing it out there. Yeah. If it works, great. If it doesn't, that's fine.
Okay. If not, we can make that, that February finance, the CEC right before the finance meeting. I can make that work because I'm pretty, I don't want to shoot myself in the foot, but I'm pretty open right now.
Well, we did move the finance committee meeting for February to the 27th. So because of that, what was it? I think it was. I think we were thinking about conferences and just other things that were happening. Oh, it's because we wanted to meet before the board meeting. So the board meeting took a week. So we moved finance into that same week so we can stay on the same cadence that we've been on. So we could look at, I mean, we can look at February 3rd to do the CEC meeting. We really would have whatever time works for people to join.
Let me, let me do this Jen. So the 27th, I am in Vegas setting up for a trade show. So that'll be 2:30 their time. Let me see if I can break away between 2:30 and three Pacific time. And then this way, nobody has to change their schedules. So I will check tomorrow and I'll get you an answer by end of day.
Okay, that's great. And if it doesn't work, Mark, we'll send it out to the group and we'll find the time.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to our next agenda item, we have no monitoring reports for the month of January. We have no executive session and our only action item is to approve the school calendar. So with that said, do I have a motion on the board, a motion on the table to approve the school calendar?
Director Moruga motions to approve the 25, 26 school calendar.
Directors took a little second.
For anyone who's in, voting is open.
Just waiting for it to pop up on my MCC. I haven't seen it yet. Oh, there it is.
Same. I haven't seen it. Oh, there it is.
Like the, the second you say you haven't seen it, it pops up. So that's the trick. Say you haven't seen it and it'll show up.
All right. It is unanimous.
All right. So 2025, 2026 school calendar passes. Moving on to the next agenda item is new business. Do I have any new business we want to add to the next board meeting?
So my only one would be, and Jen, maybe you can help me with this as far as setting timelines for board member, opening board member in the spring. I think it's March, right? So when is our next, January 30th is the next one, right? And then it'll be February, beginning of February.
Because we moved our February board meeting to the end of January with parent teacher conferences. So we don't, we'll have a work session at the end of February to match the March's board session.
Okay. So I need to have that ready to go by the January 30th meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark, I can send you all the documents and stuff that we used and then you just kind of tweak them with the dates that you want.
That would be fantastic. I appreciate it very much. So I, I'll, I'll reach out to you offline. We can kind of go through that and kind of see what works.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course. So are we, we're looking like to interview and slate somebody in April, right? That way they're ready to go.
Well, their term, their term would not start, the, the terms are July 1 through June 30. So typically you have interviews, I think it's March, you take applications, April, interview.
And vote May.
And then vote May. Or you could, I think we've, we've also done interviews and voted the same month. So you could do April, May, but you have to do it before June because we aren't in session in June.
Yeah, I just wanted to try and get it out sooner than later, just to try to drum up some quality interest.
And are, are we still doing what we've done in the past? Are you guys still planning to do kind of the, so you want to be a board member session? Here's what that means. Here's what it looks like.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the more information we get out to them, the better. And that's why I was kind of trying to think of planning sooner than later so that we have the time to schedule.
And I'm, I'm happy to help with that session in any way. If you need the PowerPoint or I'm happy to be at that session. And I think in the past, we've had other board members attend the session as has Kenlin and Jen Shaver. And I think that's been helpful too. Maris was the last one to, to kind of go through that as well. And so anyway, there's that information as well and on how that kind of has helped. People have been able to ask, you know, everyone questions and understand what it really means to be on the board versus like volunteering at the school in a classroom or on, you know, one of the, the committees that the school now has, one of the multiple committees, I guess. So anyway.
No, I appreciate that. I'll definitely be reaching out to all you guys. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other new business that we want to add to the agenda for January 30th? All right. Well, that moves us on to the final item of the day, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion on the table for adjournment?
Director Saldivar will motion to adjourn this meeting at 6:34 PM.
Director Moruga will second.
Voting is open.
Hey, I can't vote. I say yes.
Okay.
Are you sure, Maris?
It is, oh, Darnell, you're the only one that hasn't voted yet.
Oh, I came across. Let me try again here. Did it come across this time?
Yes.
Perfect.
It is unanimous.
All right. So Director Rahar here will adjourn this meeting at 6:35 PM on January 9th, 2025. We will all see you at the board retreat.
All right. Nice seeing everybody.
Bye, everyone.
See you guys.
Bye, guys.